...for the last meeting of the year. Now I apologize to be two minutes late. Mr. Woods, please.
Well, good to have you here Father. Once again, Lord, that you allow us to assemble together, Father. We thank you, Lord, for life, heaven, and strength. Father, we thank you for this year, and we have worked hard together, Lord, to make our kind of better place. And, Father, we close out 2019, give it going 2020, Lord. We put our hands in your hands, Lord. Give us a vision, determination, and a focus, Lord, to make our kind of a better place to live. These are all the best, in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And before we begin, on behalf of County Council, I'd like to offer our condolences to the family of the young man that lost his life Friday last week. He was a student at Marburg County High School. He's still on the investigation, but we feel for the family. And it's tougher than it sounds, but they've had a rash of losing students this year. I don't know what we can do for that. But anyway, I congo with this to the family. There's something about the session that we need to have an executive session now rather than at the end of the meeting, and I'd like to entertain a motion to have an executive session to discuss the contractual matter of urgency.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we have an executive session to discuss the contractual issue. My mother's phone is not on. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. We should be back shortly. Thank you. All right. Okay.
We need anything better than that.
Because you're not going to want to take any notes, really. I'm going to get that map and do some caffeine. Some notes. Set the gavel here. Moved and seconded by Mr. Glad to bring us out of executive session. No votes were taken. Let us move on. Approved agenda items. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I make the most will set the agenda as written. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the agenda as written. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. Public hearing, ordinance 791, to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park of Dillon and Marburg Counties so as to enlarge the park, which was first formed in 2016. Public hearing, any comments, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of council, this is a project with Dillon County. As you remember, we enter into these so we can benefit from, both parties can benefit from better incentives for the company. The company now can be named as Hoover Engineered Woods, and they'll make engineered wood products and related products. Specifically, they'll make a craft paper overlay, and craft papers like butcher paper, like brown paper. So that's what the project is in Dillon County. We receive 1% of the tax revenue. That's how it's set up, but we also do the same thing backwards. It's sort of a courtesy thing.
All right. No comments. Let's move on. Next, update on our 2017 strategic planning initiatives. Mr. Marlowe?
Let me see. You have 12 minutes here.
Yes, ma'am. We've taken the notes and the different input you've given us over the last month, and hopefully come to some sort of closing positive. We like nice colors and things in the way that we can. What you've got in front of you is five initiatives that have come out of our update. They were in the plan to begin with in 2017, but they've been fine-tuned somewhat as we've gone through the update over the past months. And what we've, with some discussion one-on-one and with the council leadership, is plan the meeting for next Monday night, December 16th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at The Sky. And what will happen in that meeting is we partner with the Chamber of Commerce, and we've invited all kinds of community leaders, like school board and city councils, and on and on and on and on, to introduce these to them. We'll have these printed on six-foot by two-foot boards, so they'll stand up, and folks will be able to mingle and look at them and discuss. We'll have staff people or some of you all or other experts there to, just hanging around to be able to talk about it, and folks can make comments or that sort of thing. And the thought is that not to have a big speech or presentation that night, but just to introduce these to folks in hopes that as we start the new year, we can try to find some common ground with people in the community and try to work towards things that are for the betterment of all of us. There's so much politics that we have to learn to set some of that aside when there's some big issue that isn't really political. And as you can see, these five things for the television thing are trying to find an alternative to a hospital or something to replace the fact we have no hospital. You've already done some work on that. To create a full-lane connection to US 74 North Carolina. Originally, that initiative was to full-lane Highway 38. And in the two years since we came out with that, we've heard input from people, and we've realized that, you know, maybe you achieved that, but you don't go through where people have houses and all that already. So the initiative is written more generally there, but it's an important one. And the other three are a community cleanup, which we've been very involved in. The only part of it is we need to try to all do that together, and not everybody try to have their own. Recreation, we've spoken about, you know, the need to create more programs and to coordinate with folks in the community that are doing recreation, City of Bennettsville being one. And the last one is Destination Marlboro, which is a tourism marketing initiative to try to get folks to move here or at least come through here. So you can read this, you know, for yourself, and we'll have it available at that meeting. So that's the overview of it. We also have the continued initiatives that are sort of internal or are internal to the county organization. So we'll continue to try to make government more efficient. We'll continue to work and come up with a plan that makes sure we're paying our folks fairly, and they will provide the right benefits to attract good people and keep good people we already have. So those things will continue, but they're not being presented at the public meeting. Any questions before I move on?
Questions or comments? I hope you plan to attend. We've accomplished a lot since 2017, and this will make great strides to show the public just what we've done and what we see as part of the future. Another testament to our plan of being transparent and being able to work as a team for the good of the whole county. So thank you, sir. I'll see you all on the 16th.
Well, we have, you know, the second part of this is the part about the buildings that we've gone over several times. So we wanted to report back to you with answers to a couple of questions and updates that you brought up in the last time. One of the things that we had questions about was the use of the Plaza Building. The county acquired that several years ago, and it now has the CDC in it, but it has three floors, and they're not in all three floors. We own it, and we've been maintaining it to some degree, and it is an excellent location right behind a courthouse. So Dr. Prince has some questions about whether you had to have an elevator, three floors, or that sort of thing. We did find that because it's an existing building, you do not necessarily have to put an elevator in there. If you were to put the tax office on the second floor, you would probably have to put an elevator. But if you had offices, you could have a conference room on the first floor for folks and that sort of thing. Other than that, there would be a need to do some cosmetic renovations, painting, lighting, that kind of thing. And we have a price, a cost to that would be about $50,000. And if we did an elevator, it would be about $175,000. Pretty expensive. If we wanted to move forward with that before the new budget, we could probably shift some other things around or delay them and do the cosmetic painting and lighting, but, you know, probably be best to do that in the new budget so we can plan for it. We've, council has done a great job of sticking to the budget and not coming up with new things in the middle of the year. We did, you know, it's up to you all's direction of which way to go, but we didn't want to, staff didn't want to say that we feel that if you were going to do something in there, it'd be better to be a whole department or agency and not just this and this and that. It needs to be the same sort of thing. So I guess first, is any questions or input on that building and the use of it?
The Plaza Building is a great resource for the county, and it's the only building that we own that's on the courthouse square. So I was very pleased when it came back to our possession. And representatives from the CDC have been there for a couple of years. I think we need to have a meeting with them to see what their plan is for the future. And I agree with what you're saying about either an entire county department or a rent-paying outside agency. And if they were on the second floor and needed to meet somebody that couldn't make the stairs, then there's a conference room and other smaller offices for that. But we have to be very strategic in how we use our buildings, and that's a good idea. Lighting and painting, the cosmetic kinds of things. And a doorway, a glass doorway before you get to that little empty area where you walk in. It's like a wind to a McDonald's, and litter and leaves accumulate in there. So that would be something I would want you to add to the cosmetic renovations. And it's a good, solid building, and it should generate some income if you can find an agency that wants to move in. Any other comments about?
I think it's a great idea. The Plaza Building, we're not using it really to our benefit. I think when we looked at the report of the use of the building, it was like with 20%, 30% of the building was being used. And we could get more out of the building than what we'd be getting out. Need to work on that, take a real close look at what we can do.
Do we have an income? Aren't they, somebody paying rent?
I don't think, they're not paying us any rent. They're paying a lot.
Not paying us rent, but isn't, aren't they written out one of the offices in there to someone?
There could be. I'm not sure. We don't really have a lot of control over it right now. That's another reason.
They should not be renting out any.
Well, do they have someone that's in there that's not paying any rent?
Well, as far as I know, the CDC, Ms. Joan Johniken and her organization, they pay utility bill, but they don't have authority to run out anything in a county-owned building.
No, I know they don't. I didn't think they did, but I also thought that it was another organization in that building.
Well, council had approved that sometime back, the BDDA to be in there for 90 days, and they were in there, and it was kind of left to them to work that out. And I think that rent paying was more to cover the light bill, but I honestly don't know where that stands. And that's something we can find out.
That's something we need to find out, because I think it's some kind of transaction in that building. I'm not sure what it is, but if someone, some organization that's in that building.
Okay. We can try to find out.
Well, if they paying, if it's just free to them, we need to know what they're going to be doing with that.
Mr. Woods, that. Budget, potential budget costs, and the internet, they got very good internet service, because that'd be the biggest draw. Make sure they, we got a lot of internet services, you know, for, if anybody wanted to come in and rent it, it's not fair that they're going to want to know, you know, the wire and make sure that internet accessible is strong.
Well, what we're finding now, you know, is you can do a lot of that wirelessly, so it would be a matter of coming in and installing that. It should be able to have just as good as anywhere else, from what my limited knowledge of it.
Yeah, when they were, when the CDC was operating 100%, they were doing things that were wired in. So that shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. A couple of other things. We did, we did look at, we talked last time about moving the recreation department to the back of the library where NETC was before due to concerns about where they are now and the condition of that space. So Mr. Caribou and I met with Ms. Bobby Groomes with the library, and we found that there are three rooms back there. One is a flex meeting room with rolling, rolling around folding tables. There's a computer room with rolling around tables, but computers that could possibly be made where you could push that against the wall and use it for a meeting room as well. And then there's a, another same-size room that's used by the Friends of the Library for a coffee shop bookstore. I haven't been in there when it's operating. It operates on Tuesdays. So, you know, we met with her about the need to put recreation there. They also, the library staff uses the parking there at the rear of the building that are pretty, you know, like to do that because it's more secure, they feel more secure on that. So what we're going to do is, by the end of next week, is move recreation there. There's a circular reception desk. When you walk back in there, you may remember, we'll use that, and we'll use one of the rooms to put the director and athletic director and their stuff in there. Keep in mind that we are beginning to renovate the merchandising that was in the budgets, already been approved. It just takes a little while, so we can move recreation there once we get that done. We are changing the locks on the back part, not just because we want to, but the librarian also feels they need to be changed. They haven't been changed since the people moved out. We're getting quotes, Mr. Caribou is getting quotes, to add some fencing along the parking area so you don't have as much foot traffic for security, and possibly, like Prince mentioned, a camera there, maybe the city could put a camera there. And Ms. Groomes also had an interest in a gate where they parked the bookmobile, and, you know, we should do that as well. So, you know, now, as far as what we do with that space moving forward, you know, they are occupying the space. They quick to show you how much they're occupying the space. They have purchased some of the furniture that's in there, and they are scheduling the use of the rooms. So, you know, we certainly want the rooms to be used, but it is a matter of discussion for what. They're doing different things. Nonprofits are using them, or they have programs for seniors or things like that, some of which are kind of like recreation, which is interesting. But we've started to dialogue with them, and we can see where it goes. I welcome your input on this particular issue.
When we're talking about the parking area, there probably will need to be some spaces to the side for handicap accessible in that back area. And you mentioned maybe asking the city for a security camera. What about security lighting? Because there's off-the-street parking on Possum Street, and it's kind of dark in that area, so maybe some lighting will help people feel comfortable parking in that area. And probably some sense, we own, we, the county, own that back park as a part of the exchange with Northeastern Tech, including the room that they're using as a bookstore. There needs to be some guidelines, maybe policy, procedures, or whatever, since it's county-owned and not the library. So whatever activities that they're doing need to be run by you or whomever. And if they're generating any kind of money, that should be county money and not in their budget, I'm thinking, since that technically belongs to the county.
Well, we can, we can birch that subject with them. You know, they, they had their program of action, and, you know, we're always trying to work with them as the county department. And I don't, admittedly, don't know that much about the bookstore they have and the Friends of the Library being in there, but I know the Friends of the Library are very supportive of the library, so I'm not sure how that all works. Any other input on that? Okay. A couple of other quick things. I know we've gone along here. You know, trying to figure out who goes where is like, you know, a checkers match, you know? If you move this, then you can move this. A couple of things that we had talked about last time that may, may work out is the need to do some renovations to where DJJ and EOC are, which is down, down the hill behind 911, you know, down that way. DJJ is a state agency that we're required to provide space for, and we don't receive anything from the state for that. But the people that work there are from here and all that, and they're serving people here. So we're, you know, we need to do a little bit. Where recreation is now, on Marlboro Street, down Hospital Hill, I call it, on the right, which was the last entrance to the hospital before they closed it years ago, is, that's where recreation was, and it needs renovations as well. But it's a nice space. So one possibility is that we renovate that once recreation is out and move DJJ and EOC there. Then what that does for us is it opens up the space directly behind the 911 center, and we need a new emergency operations center. Those of you, well, hopefully, a lot of y'all went up there during the hurricane, but we were standing in water one morning because of the rain leaked into the building. So we would be able to renovate that. It's connected, and we have some FEMA money that's there for repairing the previous one, and we could hopefully use that to do this one. So again, it's like, you know, playing a game here, but that's sort of the way we're going unless y'all have some different direction, particularly when we found that we had the FEMA money. That makes it, when you got money, it makes it a whole lot easier. So that's all we had. Those are the responses to your building questions. It's obviously an ongoing thing. We can provide updates as we go, but that's where we are with that.
All right. Okay. Questions or comments? Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes, October 28, 2019, work session meeting.
I move to approve minutes for the work sessions.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve three minutes as presented. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. All right. Regular meeting minutes for November 12, 2019.
I move to accept those minutes as written.
It's been moved in second that we accept the minutes for the November 12, 2019 meeting as written. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands.
I'm going to stay in those.
Thank you. Old Business, ordinance 791, to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2016 park of Dillon and Marlboro Counties so as to enlarge the park. Second reading. We've had discussion about that park during the public hearing. Any other comments or questions? Entertain a motion?
Vote.
All right. Mr. Odom moved, Mr. Mitchley second, that we accept this, ordinance 791 for second reading. All in favor, please raise your right hands. Thank you. All right. Mr. Steen?
Madam Chair, this resolution here is 121901, and it's a resolution recognizing you, so I don't know if you don't read your own resolution. So with that, I guess we would come forward and present you with this resolution.
Before we read the resolution, I know council has already had a lot of remarks, but we thank you for everything you've done for the citizens of Marburg County for many years, and countless nights, and countless phone calls that I know you've received and answered and done to the best of your ability. So here's the resolution, 121901, as a resolution recognizing and honoring Dr. Carolyn Prince for her years of service and contributions to Marlboro County. Whereas Marlboro County Council wishes to recognize and honor her possible contributions as splendor of public service to our citizens. Whereas Dr. Carolyn Prince was born in Marlboro County, South Carolina, and graduated from Eastside High School. She attended Bennett College for Women earning a Bachelor's of Science degree, and attended Tuskegee University earning a Master's degree, and attended North Carolina State University earning a PhD degree. Whereas Dr. Prince grew up in an environment of public service as her father, Wade H. Prince, was a longtime educator and community leader. Like her father, Dr. Carolyn Prince chose a life of public service as an educator, community leader, and advocate of the old people and the less fortunate. Whereas in 2000, Dr. Carolyn Nate Prince was elected to Marlboro County Council, taking office in January of 2001, representing the 5th District. She has served continually since the time and served as council chair for a total of five terms. She also served three terms as vice chair. Whereas during her time in county council, Dr. Prince has been a staunch advocate for open government accountability and professionalism in the management of the people's business. Her efforts are evidenced by such projects as the establishment of Marion Rock Elementary and later the purchase of a new bookmobile to serve the community. The county's opposition of a megadome, the renovation, and continued improvements of the Prince Center, the use of budgeting and planning to guide the county's path forward, and countless other initiatives and efforts. Whereas Dr. Prince's hard work and dedication has made a measurable impact on the quality of life for the citizens of Marlboro County. Her work has helped Marlboro County a better place. Now therefore, be it given out the claim that the members of Marlboro County Council wish to recognize Dr. Carolyn Nate Prince for her public service and dedication to Marlboro County and wish her much success and good fortune in her future endeavors. Thank you. And we have the gavel here, and so I think it's only appropriate that this would be her last official meeting. You never know, you can have a public meeting or whatever, but it's our last official meeting. So here's the gavel from the council.
Thank you.
All right. Come on, smile. We screwed the gavel down, so the seats might have to give it a new one.
Thank you.
With that, we need, I'll make that motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Should be approved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. It's approved.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll save my comments for later. And never mind by the tears. Next, with approval of the county's regular meeting schedule for 2020, included in the packet. Any comments?
We accept.
It's been moved in second that we accept the regular meeting schedule for 2020. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. All right. Any comments to boards of commissions? Mr. Marlowe? Members of council? All right. Ms. Moore?
This is on. Madam Chair, members of council, for the month of November, expenditures were at 39% of the budgeted amount. This is about 2.5% under budget for this point in the fiscal year. If you look at the bar graph, revenues appeared to be much higher this month, but this is actually due to an accounting change that we made to our lost credit accounts. And this was a change that we made per our external auditor's direction. In the past, this has been something that we posted monthly, but they advised that it should be an annual posting, and so we made that change, and you can see that here. Aside from that transaction, our revenues are trending consistently with the same month in prior fiscal years, and we're beginning to see some of that property tax revenue coming in. Are there any questions?
Mr. Marlowe?
I'm, I'm, Mr. George's report, I'm trying to be brief. We've gone along already. We always recognize service anniversaries in over five years, and this month we have three. Channing Covington with 15 years, April Drigger's with five, and Lisa Hood with 13 years. You'll see the upcoming events. We'll do the community kitchen lunch again. Librarian Bobby Groomes will be leading that group. There's the Town of Clowell Christmas Parade, Friday the 13th at 4 o'clock. I'm sure Mr. Woods would love to see you down there.
Good day.
And then if you didn't get enough, the City of Bennettsville has theirs on Saturday the 14th at 4:00 p.m., and there's space for you all and county employees that want to participate in that. There is an annual employee drop-in luncheon on Thursday the 19th. Ms. Bundy's and Melissa Block are coordinating that, so you can see the details there. They've got all these rules and what to bring, so keep up with that. As far as economic development, believe it or not, we're moving along the delta. The environment... The environment of testing and cleanup continues. Engineers advise that this should speed up in the next 90 days, and it can't go much slower, so probably a true statement. But they're having to dig test wells and do this and that to meet the DEHAC requirements before we get a good clean bill of health. We had a drop-in for the Economic Development Partnership last night and had a good turnout. It's always good to see a lot of industry and business folks here, that's what it's for, and we did see that. We expect a lot of good things in 2020, they're underway and not public right now. As far as the administrator's report, I do want to ask Mr. Fred Lowery to stand up. Fred's our new recreation director. He didn't know I was going to make him stand up.
I didn't know that at all.
So when you see him or tonight, if you haven't met him already, please do, and we'll see much more of him and as we move forward in the next year, having to, you know, he's ready to roll. He's got all kinds of ideas and ready to do them and trying not to get in his way. So we're expecting big things there. Want to give you an update on solid waste. New trash collection vendor, Waste Connections, is on schedule to begin service in early February. They have over three brand-new trucks, not new to them, but brand-new trucks, to be delivered in the middle of January, as well as the new carts to put out. They're mapping the routes for the trucks using computer software, and they've also hired Mr. Keith Adam, who would work with the other vendor, so they've got a pretty good crew set up to provide good service to everyone. We're getting increasing complaints about service with the current person, current provider. We are extending the hours of the convenience centers in Red Hill and Wallace. We're prepared to do the same thing in McCall and Blenheim if necessary, and maybe even take other measures. We want to make sure folks can have somewhere to take their trash. Unfortunately, we can't go door-to-door and collect it at this time. We want to let folks know that there is a $10 fee on the towns and city of Bennettsville properties, and that $10 means that if you live in the city or town, you can bring your old mattresses, appliances, TVs, tires, any kind of junk like that to one of our convenience centers for free at no charge. So we started that on December 1st. It is something that's put in place after the city stopped doing that, and we had a lot of folks call and wrote some sort of flat fee on there instead of having to pay at the dump, so one thing to keep in mind is if that were to change, if the city were to provide that service, we could certainly bring it to council to remove it going forward. But it is a small amount of money to be able to take what you need to take out there to one of the dumps. Obviously, it doesn't apply to commercial type situations, but other than that. We have some citizens' contacts, I think you've gotten a letter, I didn't get one yet, about O'Vale Road and Academy Road. Citizens are obviously very concerned that these two roads have not been repaired and reopened since the hurricane more than a year ago. And I know too, from talking to you, you're also very concerned about this. However, I wanted to remind everyone that these are state roads. One thing that folks are quick to point out is the county collects a $35 fee on everybody's car. Yep, that's the truth. Last year, this fee borrowed in $636,000, but what people may be not realizing is that the county owns 185 miles of unpaid dirt roads, and it takes every penny of that road fee and muller to maintain these roads. Last year's budget for maintaining the roads, the county-owned roads, was $855,000. So yes, that fee is there, but it's for county-owned roads. On the other hand, the state of Cal- Carolina collects 23 cents on every gallon of gas you buy. If you look on the internet, it'll say that the average person uses 450 gallons in a year. So obviously, that's ends up being a whole lot more than $35 a person. So these and other funds are state-owned, state funds are there to maintain these state-owned paved roads in the county, and you know, I don't know what else to do but try to call on the state to do what's right and repair these roads. It's unfortunate, and unfortunately, some folks are getting misinformation from folks that are using it as a political hot potato when they're the ones that need to be taken care of it. I'm not supposed to give my opinion, but you have enough phone cards, you can't help it after a while. Positive thing, Mr. Beard Oden's pet project and our project too, the cleanup of the state line in McCall, is going to happen. Right, Ms. Kebba?
This week. Well, they're permitted.
Well, they're permitted. And that means that those casinos on the right-hand side, past Oak Hill Road to the line are going to be gone. And I, Mr., well, Mr. Oden, maybe now you could kind of tell us, you've been the champion of this.
Yes, it's been like a three-year project. We had a couple hurricanes came through and put everything back, a couple contractors, they canceled out on doing the work. Mr. McCormick, the family's been great to work with us, and it's just, it's been a terrible eyesore coming into Marlborough County. The big thing I always think about is if we have people coming to the county, possibly to visit the oil industry, if they don't fly into our airport, they probably fly into Charlotte, so they can be coming down 74 and coming in on that north end, and that's just been a terrible entrance into Marlborough County and McCall area since the casinos closed probably about 20 years ago, well, about, I guess it was about 2000 when they shut down. But anyway, it's been a long time coming, but we're going to get it cleaned up, a new sign, brick wall, welcome to Marlborough County, and we're taking out the trees, a lot of the trees have already been taken out this week, that really, if you're coming off Oak Hill Road and you look toward Longborough, you couldn't even really see the vehicles coming, so it's a safety issue too, and I had already discussed that with Tim McGee, the local engineer, and he's actually done a pretty good job of cutting back the ditch as far as he could go without stepping on the private owners right away, so. But anyway, we're glad to see that thing get cleaned up and our entrance will look as good as any of that entrance that's coming into the county, and those eyesores will be gone, hopefully, no later than next week.
And we'll send y'all a message if you want to come out and watch them knock it down. We put bids out, the local company got it, and we had an agreement with the landowner that we would clean it all up in exchange for the piece to put the welcome sign on, so we're all excited about it. The only other thing is, very briefly, just want to thank Dr. Prince as well. You know, I've been a peer of hers on council, and she's been my boss and, I hope, her friend, and we're going to miss her here, she's not going that far. We want to work together with the city, but if we can't, you know all our tricks, so we're going to have a tough time. But we know you're going to do well, and the folks over there, the good folks on council, will be lucky to have you as their leader.
So they kick me out, you'll take me back?
At least it'll hopefully be on TV from now on.
Will it be on TV? In response to the letter that we received from this citizens' group led by Ms. Cole, I'm suggesting that you craft a letter on our behalf incorporating the language you put in this report, so that she will have the correct information and express our concern too, but our hands are tied, so, and copy everybody on that letter that she copied to us. I think if somebody writes you a letter, you need to respond to. All right. We have one citizen, Mr. Geno Roth. Yes, sir. Please come up. We have three minutes. Would you do your name and address for?
My voice is very well.
Name and address for?
Just another issue right here, I haven't been down in this state where the board has meetings, but I'm concerned about, it concerns me that I've got to pay $170 a year for a trash service that I never used. I mean, it's convenient, great for a lot of people. For me, I never needed it, never wanted for myself. And then to say that I'm going to be saving $110 by using a service which I don't need, I make a hell. That's all I've got to say. It just concerns me that I've got to pay this $170 for a convenience that I never used or never wanted. I don't need it. And I know that two other people in my area that are in the same position. I haven't been down here earlier, but like I just previously said, I haven't been in this state where none of you guys have the board meetings, so I've got to take advantage of what I got to present my case. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Before we go to recognition before council members, on behalf of council, I'd like to present Christmas gifts for the crew that have been taping and broadcasting our meetings ever since we started. I think there've been turnover, maybe one from last year. Mr. Derek Little, is he here? All right, Reggie Adams, I'm sorry, Primus, Reggie, Mr. Patterson, and Ms. Haley, is that Rower? Rower? And Jaheem McLaurin?
Come on down.
Can you leave the cameras for a minute?
Yeah. Don't leave their post now, I tell you.
Let's get a shot.
You have to turn around, face the camera, there you go.
Turn around, probably on camera.
Reggie? Mr. Patterson, we've got more to do for the grant, but I'm going to have to get Patterson. We appreciate it so much. It's a testament to our desire to be transparent and provide a service for our citizens who can't get here in person. Quite a few people watch, and that's a good thing. Council members, Mr. Oden will start with you.
Yes, I'd like to wish all the council members and administration and people in Marlborough County a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday. Always be cognizant of if you've got friends going out of town, and sort of keep an eye on their property, and you know, we all need to be each other's keeper, and that's always good if you are going out for the holidays, to let the neighbor know that you are going to be gone for a few days. Appreciate the sheriff's department, this is a time of year that they put in a lot of hours to keep us all safe, and you know, we really need to think about them and play for them as they're out all hours of the night, making sure we're all safe. And again, hopefully Thursday at 1:00, we should be, have some equipment out on the state line and begin the demolition of the building, so that's going to be a welcome sight. That's it.
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and get through everything it says, and thank Dr. Prince for all you do for us, and remember us when you get to the big league up there. And two, don't forget to help you with the Blenheim building.
That's right.
Keep on helping with it.
That's right, for sure.
I am truly proud of you, Dr. Prince. For you to step up to run for mayor because of something that we needed to happen here, I mean, that was just great. Working with you for the past eight years has just been a blessing, and I know you're going to do the right thing, there's no if, ands, buts. I know the city and the county be able to work together, which is a blessing, and it's just, it's just really great. I really appreciate your own progress.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll do your part again. It's a, just, you know, the O'Vale Road thing, I spoke with somebody at DOT this week and just about some other things, and I always ask about O'Vale Road, you know, it's almost monthly that you ask them, and they told me, and we're going to record, that they said in next year that they all have plans to repair O'Vale Road. Well, that's two years too late, but it's still, you know, the talk is that they all planning on doing something, so it's not soon enough, but at least there's a little bit of hope. I think they finally got some, somewhere with the landowner or whatever they're going to do, but that's what I was told, I think, Monday morning, so that's good news if anything. It may be December of 2020, but I was told it was, I mean, I hope it's January, but I told it, I was told it's going to be in 2020, so, but I still think, well, let's draft the letter, you know, I think our delegation should have been pushing for it hard, I mean, you know, that's just, that's my take, is, you know, if we get state, I mean, we got gas taxes to repair roads and, you know, I understand repairing them, but when they're out and causing inconvenience and a safety concern, you know, it's the sheriff knows many times, if you're down there and you've got to go all the way around it, I mean, it's about four or five miles out of your way, so for public, for safety is, you know, is a big thing, so hopefully we can get that moving, or the state can get it moving. Really excited about our strategic plan that's been going on, you know, you stayed that course and keep moving, hopefully, you know, the hospital alternative and the, you know, the 38, or the four-lane connect would be a big thing. Same way with public safety, you know, the cartel on that road, for a two-lane road, it's just dangerous if you ever try to cross any of those roads in the summertime, I mean, it's dangerous, so you know, hopefully that can be something that we can move forward. So, and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, like I said, enjoy everything, and Dr. Prince, like I said, I've learned a lot from you in my tenure here, and so, like I said, I'm thankful for everything you've done, for helping me along the way, you know, grow as a council member, and you know, so we're better able to serve the citizens. Like I said, I know everybody's thankful for what you've done for the citizens of Marlborough County, and I can truly say that we're better off for you being in the position that you've been, and I look forward to, you know, continue to move forward in the things that we have on the horizon, and so congratulations for the new mayor's spot, and we're going to miss you here, you know, there'll never be another Dr. Prince, so you know, if she agreed with you, she agreed with you, she didn't, she let you know, but she was going to stand up for us right, I mean, so, and that's what, you know, we can all hope to do, so thank you for everything.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, sir.
I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and remind everybody of the little drop-in we're having with the chamber on Monday, and going over our strategic plan, and hope to see people there and look forward to discussing our plan. And I'd like to commend Dr. Prince on a job well done, and thank you for all you've done for the county, pulling us together and keeping us on the same page. I know you're going to do a great job with the city.
Thank you, thank you.
Well?
You want me to go? I can't follow somebody crying. I ain't going to follow you. You be crying, I ain't going to follow you.
Okay, I'm not going to say that much. But I wish everybody in here, under the sound of my voice, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And if you're traveling, I hope that you have a safe trip there and back, and just keep in mind, remember the reason for the season, and try to long the way somewhere, give somebody a helping hand, and do something to make you feel good in the heart. Now, I did write out some stuff to say to Dr. Prince, but I left it home. But I'm going to say a few things in the heart, and.
It's late, Miss.
I'm going to say a few things. I have enjoyed working with Dr. Prince over the years. We've always been friends, and I hope we continue, and I hope you don't change, because you're mayor now, but I hope we continue to be friends, and I do know without a doubt that you're going to do a great job, and you, but the main thing I would say to you and anybody, in doing anything and moving forth, you've got to put the man upstairs first.
That's right.
And if you put him first and let him guide and direct you, it's nowhere in the world you're going to go wrong. Because when you feel alone and lost, he's right there to comfort you. So all I can do is tell you to hold on to his hand, keep, you're going to have to do a lot of praying, I know that. And just hold on to his hand and keep praying, and he'll guide and direct you, and we're going to keep in touch, and I know you're going to do a great job in helping us out, and we're going to hang in there with you. All right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That wasn't bad.
No, I should have went for you there. I went in that direction.
Fred, welcome, and the new staff. We, Recreation is, we'd be glad to have you, like I said, anything you need and support-wise, you know, you've got an administrator and a board that will support you 110%, like anyone else, you know, we hope everybody have a good holiday. And Dr. Prince, like your dad is a worker, a pioneer. You doing the same thing, you are breaking windows, you're feeling to do something, January the 2nd, that has never been done before. It's a milestone, it's a great achievement, and African-American race and the women have a role model, local role model. We all can follow you and look up to you in a big way. The young women of today, black or white, don't matter, can look at you and see a woman of good standards, a woman that is knowledgeable, and do things black and white, you're going to do great. If it's black and white, you know, Dr. Prince is on point. And I've been here since '06, and like everyone else, you know, you have taught us, you have showed us, we have followed your leadership, we have understood your clarity. And like everyone else, you know, you have taught us, you have showed us, we have followed your leadership, we have understood your clarity, your awareness of detail. And that will benefit us. 2020 is gonna be a challenging year for us. We ain't losing that leader. We have someone else new coming in, but we are a team. And as a team, when one lose, when we lose one, we just come together, be more stronger. We just got the next man up. And a new person come in, we embrace them and teach them along the way. Good luck in 2020. And hope everybody have a good, safe holidays. Steve, how's that, your boy?
Sheriff?
Yes, sir. Madam Chair, to the county council, to Mr. Administrator and all of his attendants, I want to stand before you, and say that I appreciate the year of 2019 for what you all have done for my department individually and collectively as a body of councilmen and councilmembers. I do very so much appreciate that. And I'm speaking for myself as a sheriff, and I'm speaking for my whole department. Because you all have really, really supported the Marlboro County Sheriff's Department. And you all have really, really helped us. And I want to say to you, thank you, thank you, thank you for your job well done. And Dr. Prince, I say to you that you are a pillar in the community, and I know that you will be. And I ask you that if there's anything that we can do for you or the department, we will do our level best. With that being said, in these trying times and it's tough, I ask that y'all pray for my department and pray for me because of all. Within the last month, we've lost four students. And I'm telling you that, it's tough on me as a sheriff because I have to get involved in every aspect of it. But God's able, and I know.
Yes, students.
Y'all pray for us. And I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year. And please, please be safe because there's all kinds of shysters, there's all kinds of gambling, and all kinds of scams going on. We've been dealing with some stuff today in the county. And on last evening, we did some stuff, and we're trying to get it all out. And if there's any information that y'all can give or share about what we're working on, please, madam, please start a call. But again, I want to say, thank all of you, thank all of you. Thank you very much.
All right. I don't know where to begin. My heart goes out to each and every one of you. First of all, I want to thank the citizens for District 5, for electing me for full terms. It's been interesting, I never dreamed, I'm such a private person, that I have a life of political office. And I say I'm a public servant, I'm not a politician. I don't know how to do the things that politicians do. I know how to serve people and try to address the needs. And that's what I've always put first on any decisions that council has made. And I have to thank all of you for coming together to be a team. You know, you may get a call regardless whose district the person lives in, they have a need, and we always respond. And we make good decisions, hard decisions, because we've been good stewards of the people's money. And that's real important in a small rural county with a lot of need. So we've always put the best interest of the citizens first. And I think that's a good thing. I've learned a lot. I've tried to use my skills and my experience to, for the best thing. And being a council member and also serving as chair, it's been interesting. You know, I've been a lightning rod all my life, and I guess I was born with a coat of Teflon. But that's okay. And in everything that I've done, everybody mentioned my father, but most people don't know the impact that my mother had on my life. And she taught me a lot of things as a child. There's a little book, Kindergarten for Dummies or something or whatever, but what I've learned, you know, for public life, my father, but my mother's impact. Treat everybody with dignity and respect. And know that you are no better than anyone else. I was privileged to be born in the family that I was born into. It didn't matter. I'm not gonna change. If I'm not in the house, where can you find me? In the garden? Okay, Carol is gonna be Carol, and I'm gonna work hard. It's gonna be an objective to try to bring some unity and clarity to the city. People asked me starting in January, and I won't name who, but some of them are sitting in this room. And I kept saying, this is not for me, this is not for me. But my pastor asked, said, let's fast and pray, he and I, and we did. And here I am. 639 other people voted, so I didn't do this by myself. And moving forward, I'm not gonna leave the city by myself. We're gonna be a team, because that's how I operate. I'd like to thank Mr. Marlin, first as a councilperson, then as administrator. I learned a lot from him too, because he's been in the business world, and it's different. But then it overlaps, because running the county is a business, okay? And sometimes people lose sight of that. To the senior staff, Mr. Carapal, Ms. Moore, Ms. Sumpt, Mr. Lowery, I'll get to know you. It's been interesting. And thank you, thank all of you for everything you've done for the county in your positions. And of course, the sheriff and his group continue to look after me. Everywhere I go, I waved to everybody, cops, sheriff's deputy. There was a sheriff's deputy van going to Charleston. Okay, I think I waved at him a couple of times. I got off and got back on, I passed him again. Okay, so I don't know if they recognize. That's my one vice, okay? I own up to it. But, and I, that's what I like about us, we have fun, we're like a family. The doors open, Ms. Patricia, if you get tired of them. But it's been, I mean, I just can't believe it's been 19 years. And this is not what I had planned in my retirement, but the Lord had other things in mind. So being obedient, I'm gonna, you all put a lot of accolades on my shoulders. But I know with your help and prayers and my determination and my skills, it's gonna work. It takes time. People don't like change, but change is good. They say they want it changed, well, here I come. Okay, but I'm still the same person. I'll come visit, you all come visit me. I'm looking forward to the new challenge, but I hate to give this up. I was looking to do 20 years, and you all are taking that away from me. But anyway, I won't prolong this. Thank you so much for everything. The swearing-in is January 2nd, 12 noon at the community center. And as Mr. Wood say, we will make history in Bennettsville. So please tell everybody here and far, come out and witness history as Bennettsville starts the first, the second day of its 300th year, because they did the bicentennial this year. So they ended with electing me as their mayor. And that's something that I don't take lightly. But anyway, enough said, thank you so much. And my prayers for everyone as we enter the most holy of holidays. And it's not about the Christmas tree and Santa Claus, it's about our faith. And to echo what Ms. Plato said, you know, you reach a point, then what else do you need? Or why do you give things to people who really don't need anything? Here's another candle or cup or whatever. Find a family, find a child, okay? If you don't know of any, go to any parent coordinator, any of the schools. Go to DSS. Or maybe somebody you already know who's struggling. Bring some joy to a child, okay? I've been doing this for years, I follow my father's footsteps. I don't know any other way to be. But I guess I got another four years to go before I can retire. And thank you to the crew. And it's just been interesting, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'll be around, I'll turn in my key on the 31st. But thank you so much for everybody to help make this council what it is. We make a great council, we set the bar high. So I'm gonna challenge the city to step it up a notch or two, as Emerald will say. But again, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure. And Godspeed to everyone. Meeting is adjourned.
Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, you want me to make sure that I tell all of the county council members you all, you all, he's having a good gathering on the 18th, from 11:30 to 12:00.
At his place?
At his place, Blenheim, you want all of you all, that's the place, to keep on.
All right. And I want to tell you something. Turn off the air.